Okay, let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, January 29th. If I guess everyone is in, please present the pledge of allegiance.
The school board endowed the end stands and faces the flag.
....................................
All right, thank you to all you brave souls who have come out this evening. It's a little chilly out there. And I see people with sweatshirts who talk about swimming.
Yeah.
No.
Never too quick.
Can't even imagine swimming. Okay. All right, so let's start with a roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Pat Gruddy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Lewis.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
All right, so we got it this evening. Our agenda, we will have, we'll open it up for public comment. We will have the College and Career Resource Center report, part of the educational presentation. We will not have student, oh no, we have student recognition also. Yeah, so we have both of those. We will not have student school board representative reports under the president's report. We'll have superintendent's report, we'll vote on the consent vote agenda. We will have an update from Facilities and Finance, program personnel, little movement on property. Can you see them?
............
Okay. ISB, Jim? No. Okay. And then we are going to cancel the executive session due to the weather and the plummeting temperatures here this evening. So the semi-annual review of closed session minutes, we will take up under the superintendent's report. Okay? I think that's it. Anybody got any other comments? Okay, so let's open up, anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight?
The board waits.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our educational presentation, so student recognition.
The HHS principal, Dr. John Gilliam, steps to the podium.
Good evening. Thanks. Excited tonight to have members of our female swimming and diving team. Last, over the last couple of years, we've been fortunate enough to snag two excellent people from Highland Park High School. One of them's sitting out here, and the other one's sitting over here. Coach Block is a first-year coach with us. We stole her from Highland Park. It was a great steal. And she has had, she and her team have had a tremendous year. I was fortunate enough to see them swim a couple times, especially at Evanston for the state meet, and they did awesome. And so we have two of the six, I think, and you said, "I can't imagine swimming today." Well, I think four of them are swimming in the pool right now. But we have two of the best here with us tonight, and Coach Block is going to introduce them.
Coach Block steps to the microphone.
First of all, thank you so much for allowing us to be here and to recognize what the girls have done. It means a lot to us. They put a lot of time and effort in, and again, they swim in all weather conditions. Fortunately, we get the fall sports, which is, fall is much better than boys with swimming in the winter. But thank you so much for taking the time out of your meeting to recognize us. It means a lot. As John said, it was a tremendous year for all of us. It was a great, I walked into a great opportunity, and I had great kids to work with, and I feel very fortunate to be here, so thank you for that. Just to mention some of the girls that weren't able to come because they are at swim practice. The two swimmers, the diver and swimmer that are here that I'll recognize also made an effort to do their practice and still get here. So extra credit for them for making it happen in both ways. The girls that are unfortunately not here, I'll just mention who they are because they had tremendous years, a tremendous season, and they added a lot to the state meet and our 12th place finish, which is the best in school history. 12th place is really a big deal at our state meet. It helps having a diver get second place, I'll tell you that. That's a lot of points right there. But we had relay score and individual scores, which we've never had in the past, so it was a tremendous team effort all around. So Anna Long, she was on, she was on both of our relays, and her sister Ellie Long was also on the relay. She's a senior, we'll be missing her. The other members of the 400 and 200 free relay, they were the same four swim. The Fab Four included Casey also, Casey Craffey, who's going to come up here, and Drew Putterick, who was our fourth, and she's a senior, and she'll be leaving, and she'll be sorely missed also. So our two relays, the 200 free relay and the 400 free relay, we got 10th and 11th, which is great, and two new school records, which was also really nice. Drew also swam in the 50 free, and she was 11th place, so that was a nice individual finish for her in her senior year. And otherwise Sasha, Alexandra Sasha Skachkov, we just call her Sasha, she placed 11th in the 100 fly, which was also tremendous. Our medley relay missed by this much, which she was a part of, and two other swimmers, which didn't make it to finals, but they got to go to prelims at state. All three relays, which is also a school first, so that was pretty exciting. Next year, they were 14th, a couple places up. Hopefully all three relays, which would be really a great feat. So I'd like to call the two girls that are here and recognize their individual accomplishments and team. First, we have Ally Landis, who if you don't know anything about diving, she's the one to know, and she's the one to watch. She broke the school record more than once this year, and she had a tremendous season. She placed second at the Illinois State Meet. That's me. Correct me if I'm wrong, what place were you in going into the last round?
Seven.
Seven? And that's going into her last dive. That's like clutch diving. I mean, that's when you really show your true grit, and she is, she's really a true competitor, and she did great. So school record, second place at the state meet, she can, she's got one more nacho. That's it. So that's what we hope for next year. And she won conference handling and sectionals. That goes without saying. So congratulations.
The two women share a hug.
Happy you all were here with her. Next up, we have Casey Craffey, who is an awesome swimmer in every event, in every distance. She placed in 500, which I wanted to recognize also. She was 12th place in the 500. She was also a member of both relays. Not only did the relays break school records, Casey broke her own 500 freestyle record this year, going under five minutes, and that is like in any of, any sport, four-minute mile, five-minute mile, five-minute 500. It's a big barrier, it's a really big deal, and I think she'll go way under now that she's kind of, you know, broken through that. So that was really exciting. And she's only a sophomore, so that's great, too. So Casey had a great meet, and both of these girls, not only are they year eight swimmers, they're great students. They're all academic, all scholar, all everything. And we're just as proud of their out-of-deck in-school stuff as they are in the pool. So this is two of our, two of our eight, actually, but thank you again, and hopefully we'll have good news. We'll win sectionals, we'll win conference again, and place at state. It was a pretty good year, so thank you.
The two women share a hug.
Thank you. You should be, we're here, we're taking a picture. She jumped in with the girls.
The swimmers stand for a picture with Coach Block, Dr. Gilliam, Superintendent Prentice Lee, and Board President Pat Gruddy.
Thank you.
You good? Okay, one more round of applause.
LHS principal, Dr. Tom Koolandes.
Prentice, if I could just share that Casey is a Vernon Hills student, but she's sort of an adopted wildcat because her mom is Doreen Lunkie, who is our special service teacher at LHS. So congratulations.
Superintendent Prentice Lee.
Great, thank you all. And as always, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, or you can actually go home and get one. So your choice.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, College and Career Resource Center report. This is one I've always looked forward to.
Two women with microphones address the board.
Hi, everybody. I don't know, is this working? Doesn't really sound, yeah?
Working.
Okay, good. Alrighty. So we are the district college counselors. Becky Bolito, I work in this building, and my story is a little different from Amy in terms of like background. I started here right out of college, and I was an English teacher, and then I got my master's in counseling and was able to intern here. And then I was a counselor for like 10 years before moving into the college counselor role. So I have been super fortunate to have so many different roles in one building, whereas Amy, we like balance each other out because she's got varied background for that. How many years have you been here? I think I'm on year 17. So it's been a while, yeah.
Hi, everybody, I'm Amy Belster, and I'm the college counselor at Libertyville, where I have been for nine years in that role, but I actually can say, I was adding this up the other day, this is my 31st year working in this profession, either on the college admissions side or on the high school side. So I actually started my career in college admissions. I did that for about 11 years. I spent most of that time at University of Denver in Colorado, and I followed that up with grad school and then working at a private school briefly, and then at a large public school out there. But I'm from the Midwest, so I'm a good Indiana girl, actually. So moved back to be closer to family and find myself very fortunate to be at a school like Libertyville. It was sort of the perfect place for me, so that's my background.
And then we just wanted to highlight kind of our function in the district, and so, you know, primarily, we are here as a resource for our students and families, giving them information and helping them throughout high school with the college process. But then we're also here for the teachers and counselors. You know, teachers have to write a lot of letters of recommendation. Counselors get a lot of questions asked of them, and so we're a support for them, as well as for admin, even like in terms of curriculum and what colleges are looking for and what they'll accept certain courses as. We have a lot of contacts at the colleges, and so it's really easy for us to get that input from them.
We have really interesting jobs, to be honest, and a lot of what we do is programming. This is sort of a conglomeration of both what Becky does here at Vernon Hills and what I do at Libertyville, but we have a lot of overlap. We have different student populations, so we work with them in different ways. Just to, you can see there's sort of a lot that we do in the fall. We're now into spring semester, getting ready for working with our juniors, that sort of thing. We each have a couple of programs I want to call out here. Becky has a college night for Spanish-speaking families that we actually advertise to our families as well, and I think that's just a great program to work with those students. At Libertyville, we tried something new this year. We did a military interest day, which for a first shot out of the door, we, I was blown away by the response we got. We had students from grades nine through 12, did it the day after Veterans Day, which was really good timing, so we were excited about that. We do, we each do junior programs in the fall, and we're actually getting ready for a new joint program this March that Becky and I are just a little bit psyched about. We're calling it College Palooza, right on. And it's going to be here at Vernon Hills this year. We're hoping to rotate it each year, a joint event. We're bringing in a ton of speakers to talk to our students and parents, and we actually have a keynote speaker we're very excited about. He's the editor-in-chief of the Princeton Review Guidebooks. So his outreach coordinator, this is really a small world thing, actually is a mom of Vernon Hills kids. And he like lives in New York or New Jersey, so anyway.
Yeah, it was wild.
His name is Rob Franek. We're so super excited about this. So lots of things, all told, we probably both do 12 or 13 different programs throughout the year in the evening, as well as, of course, lots of daytime things, so.
And a lot of times, we go like an hour and an hour and a half, so I hope you guys are okay with that. No, okay, no, just kidding. I got strict information. We're keeping this short, short and sweet. It's freezing outside. And then these are some additional things that work through our offices. When colleges come to meet with kids and give like brief info sessions, those are organized through the CRC. We organize our own internal scholarship application for local scholarships at both buildings, along with like supporting students on any other scholarship apps they have. We're always doing individual appointments, reading a ton of essays in the fall and again during scholarship season in the winter, and then, you know, promoting the different college fairs that are out there, either at CLC or in the city or Milwaukee.
Slide, school profiles.
Well, we just thought it would be interesting for you guys to see sort of our general profiles. We each publish a school profile every year that's way more detailed, that actually goes into a lot of information that accompanies all of our transcripts and documentation that we send out to support kids' college applications. But Becky and I were just talking about this this afternoon, and just how interesting it is to, you know, these are obviously two very highly college-bound communities, but it's good to compare them side by side, I think, at the same time, because it really sort of highlights some of the differences in our, in our two populations. But I think we're both very proud of the fact that we're over 90% college-bound, both two-year and four-year. We actually hit a milestone at Libertyville last year, I think it was last year, that I'm not sure I'm happy with, where 71% of our students are going out of state. And that was a reflection of our Illinois economy, a lot of other things going on, and recognize that out of state is a few miles north. Sometimes it's closer to go to Madison than it is to go to U of I, but at the same time, it was, it was an interesting statistic for us. Our kids go, at both schools, go to a lot of different places. They go far afield. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you want to say anything about it.
Yeah, so we compared our colleges that are most attended, and there's a ton of overlap. So while by percentages, it might look quite different, like our kids are applying to a lot of the same schools, getting accepted to a lot of the same schools, and this is just like a quick glance at some of the top hitters from last year's graduating class and where they attended. So I think families are always interested in that information, and really, we see like one kid goes somewhere different, loves it, you know, it doesn't take long before the younger friends start being interested and take a look at that school, so, which is really easy to do now that they have the internet, right? I couldn't look up anywhere, and so that's why you're seeing kids are all over the nation. It's really easy to get info on those places.
The big, we always joke that the Big Ten is very well-represented in District 128.
Slide, trends in college admission.
And we, the last thing we wanted to do is just, you know, we're, there's, we could talk about a lot of things, but again, with the nature of time tonight, just to highlight some of the trends that are happening in, in our world. So I think Becky was gonna hit a couple.
So when seniors come back and they're like still in summer mode, I quickly jolt them awake, letting them know like, well, yes, it's August, and that brings us into application season right away. Deadlines are creeping up earlier, more and more colleges are offering early decision as a binding agreement, and more and more colleges are admitting a good portion of their classes through early decision, which, just to be clear, early decision is a commitment from the student and the family saying, "If I get accepted here, I will attend here," and they have to sign something. And we're seeing that be more and more of interest to our students as they see that students are, that schools are filling their freshman class like a good chunk through the early decision pool. And that's very stressful, or that's one of our bullet points here. You know, but even for kids that aren't going the early decision route, there's priority deadlines that are November 1, and these applications take a lot of time, and every college wants something different in a different way, and so it's just a lot to juggle, and so a lot of our job is just like supporting students through how complicated and confusing that process can be in the fall, and just like trying to keep everyone calm and just knowing the right next step. For testing, you know, more and more colleges are actually starting to go test actionel. A big one this fall was University of Chicago, said that they would be open to students not sending a standardized test score, that that was a piece that if the student wished to submit it, they could, but it wasn't necessary, and that's just a reflection of more and more colleges realizing that a test on one day is not a good indicator always of future success at college. And so the essay, they, you know, made a big deal, I think like 10 or so years ago, about adding the essay component to standardized tests. There's only like 13 schools or so that actually require that. Subject tests very rarely require, and a lot of colleges are allowing students to self-report their scores, which is nice for financial reasons, that kids aren't having to pay for each test score that they want sent to each college. Once they decide where they're gonna go, they have to send the official score to verify that they didn't just make up that they got, you know, their score, but it's like, you know, they would do so jeopardizing their admissions. So it's to provide more access to students that maybe like financially it would be limiting to have to send a score to 10 different places, for example.
Well, on that note, actually talking about self-reporting, I'm gonna skip to the next bullet. We're finding more and more colleges are allowing students to self-report their, their transcripts, essentially, their grades and classes on the application and not send an actual official transcript. That's a wave that's going to continue to, I think, grow, because I would not be surprised at all if in five years, the majority of colleges are doing that. So just some interesting trends that are happening. Because of all the confusion and because of all the different options out there, the, we spend a lot of time just calming down students and parents and letting them know it's all gonna be okay, your child's gonna go to college, you're gonna go to college, this is all gonna be okay, but as with any school, district, our kids are very brand-name conscious, they're looking at certain types of schools, they're very hopeful, and they just continue to apply to more and more colleges. So we're constantly trying to let them know it's all gonna be okay, that you're gonna land, it's gonna be fine. And then finally, there's just some interesting developments happening in our world as well. You might be familiar with the Harvard case, that, you know, they have had a suit brought against them about discrimination in their admission process, and it's sort of bringing back that affirmative action argument, that is affirmative action really appropriate or not. We also belong to an organization we'll tell you about that is a national organization of high school counselors and college admission professionals. They are under investigation by the Department of Justice for, we're not even 100% sure why, but we think it has to do with deadlines. So just weird things are happening in our world, and it's got everybody kind of on edge.
Yeah, and these are some of the organizations that we participate in, and so we're very lucky that our district is supportive of us being, you know, very involved with these different organizations. IACAC, NACAC, College Board, and then different advisory boards for colleges. Colleges a lot of times want to get feedback on how they're handling their business through high school, college counselors' eyes. And so Amy, I think, has a meeting next week, a conference call with one of those colleges, you know, to give some of her feedback. IACAC, you know, I, the past two summers have been lucky to go on what's called the Bus O-Fun or the Plane O-Fun Tour, and it's basically a group of counselors and college counselors from Illinois who tour 12 to 14 colleges in six days, and it's like the best workout of my life. So, but it's invaluable professional development experience, and there's no substitute for that, and, you know, we go to the NACAC conference every year and.
She's not telling you that she's going to be coordinating that bus trip.
I just try not to think about it. Yeah, somehow they got me to say yes, I would plan it, so I am planning a tour for like 44 counselors, and I'm really bad with maps. My husband couldn't believe that I got this job. Like, I don't have to know how to get there, I just need to know where to go, so.
That's pretty awesome that Becky's getting involved at that level. And we both have done a variety of things within these organizations, so it's, again, it's great to be supported to do this and to also grow ourselves professionally, because we find immense resources through these organizations. So I think that was, that was our main things we wanted to highlight for you, and just see if you had any questions, anything you wanted to ask of us. Yeah?
I am curious about, like, when you have students, and I'm guessing it's a fearless amount percentage, that are doing like performance-based college admissions, so for instance, in the, you know, singing music or whatever.
Music, yeah.
Is that something that they come to you for guidance, so they go to the, or the department and the finance, or they?
Yes. Both, honestly. I think it's, anytime students are looking at really competitive programs like that, be it in dance, music, theater, any of the visual performing arts, it's kind of a team effort. Certainly, I think Becky and I help them with that, but they have to either have portfolios or auditions, and that's where their individual teachers can really be a resource to them as well.
I, my youngest did this before your time, so I'm curious what, how that's changed, because I don't, I think he pretty much did it on his own, which was actually great, because he.
That's awesome.
Yeah, but, but I'm sure, you know, I just didn't know if he knew that he could go and get help at the time, and it didn't, you know, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
I wondered if that changed, because we have so many students that are going on to.
Oh, for sure. Yes.
And I think, you know, just even knowing to guide families from the beginning if they're talking about that, like, hey, your application process is gonna look a little different, and you need to get a head start on that, because for some colleges, you're gonna have to apply to the college and then also to the music department, for example, and you're gonna have to set up an audition, and just, you know, so I think the teachers are also good at communicating that, because a lot of times, they're the first line of defense in terms of knowing which students are really passionate about pursuing that. But then, you know, I had to sit last year on the phone with a college in the performing arts department, you know, with a student to try and navigate difficult circumstances, you know, that she wasn't quite sure what was going on, I wasn't, and like, we got the answer together, so.
That's new, glad to hear it. I, you know, I just, I think it's just great, kids that are coming out of our schools.
Oh, absolutely.
And I, yeah, so, great.
Yeah, for sure.
And we promote, like, there's a college fair now, I don't know if there was when you were told, but there's a performing arts college fair that's offered at UIC a lot of times in the fall, and so we will send that out to families just so that they can check out that college fair that's specific to that interest.
They have like the unified auditions where, you know, you can do a lot, a lot of your auditions together. That was just new territory for us, you know, because we hadn't gone through it.
Right, right. Yeah, but we, we helped, if they come to us, we are happy to do that. We're absolutely happy to help them with it. Yeah?
So this is one of my favorite topics, actually. I was gonna be saying, Prentice, I wanna see a presentation on this.
And here you are, I mean, imagine it.
But I mean, the reason for that is every time I go by the College Resource Center in need of school, they're always busy, there's a lot of activity. In fact, I think I was in LAJES one day, and I walked by, and I love the board that had all the visitors coming from all the colleges. It must have been in the fall, and I saw their Fairfield University, and I'm like, Fairfield University, like, that's where I grew up in Connecticut, and they're coming to LAJES, and I go, that is pretty cool. But I guess I'd have to get two questions. So when the visitors from all the colleges come, you know, I would imagine they give you some feedback of some kind, I would hope, and I'd ask you, you know, what do they say? And in particular, do they say good things, and are there any things they say when they say, "Hey, listen everywhere, hey, this is what we're looking for, you gotta defile."
So you're saying feedback about like D128?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. They were very well-respected as, as a district, as two high schools. We probably see somewhere around 200 colleges every fall-ish. And yes, it's always interesting to me to see who's going to come in every year. New Year's gonna have a few more than that, that's totally okay, but at the same time, the colleges are really looking at all the northern suburbs to recruit students. Their feedback is always very positive, and we always have good conversations with them, but one of the things we always hear is, "Your kids are very well-prepared, they do very well." We hear that from the students themselves, that they come back and tell us that, "Yeah, I did, I did good, I was ready, I was ready." Sometimes I love it when they come back and go, "Shoot, it was easier than high school." And I'm like, "Just you wait, that's gonna change."
Yeah, and I think like they always are so pleased when our students are inquisitive during those visits, and, you know, you said you love this topic, like, I think it's great because it's pretty easy to get a captive audience when you're talking about college, if that's something that's remotely on your radar, and so, but when our students come and meet with those reps, like, I've had multiple reps afterwards be like, "That group was like lively," and they, you know, like, it wasn't just like every other visitor, they're asking the right questions, or they, you know, just, they're impressed with our students even just from a conversational standpoint.
We have very collegial relationships with our, we're friends with our admission reps. It's a, it's very much a team effort. We all belong to the same organizations, you know, professional organizations that we showed, and we support each other. We bring them in to talk to the kids for programs, and they utilize us in lots of different ways, too.
And then just one other real quick question, I mean, and you kind of touched on it, more, if somebody, people are going to New Year's and not going to here, you know, I kind of wanna know why. So I guess my question would be, is there anything more we could or should be doing from our own brand recognition standpoint that might make them stop here before they go to New Year's?
So, to be honest, I think. So, to be honest, I think, yeah, no, absolutely. I, it's not that we're doing anything different. They, they have a little bit more name recognition in that. But you are doing that by supporting us to go out there and be sort of the face of D-128 at the national organizations or national conferences and that sort of thing. You know, Becky is, you know, starting to get very involved with IACAC, which is wonderful. I just rolled off as a chief delegate, so I was sort of rounding up our Illinois delegates that go to the NACAC Assembly to vote on measures, vote in our executive board, that kind of thing. I've sat on a national committee. That helps to get just, people are like, oh, Libertyville, you know, oh, Vernon Hills. It's a, it's a good way for us to represent that out there. So, that involvement's important to us, but it's also important, I think, to the district.
Yeah, and I think like the fact our teachers support students attending the college visits is really helpful, too, because, you know, sometimes they're only there for like 45 minutes. And so, if it's during a kid's class and that's a college they're very interested in, that's important FaceTime with it. And so, you know, I think if students didn't show up for these appointments, that would make reps be less inclined to continue to sign up. But I think it just continues to grow. And as one student attends a school that's never visited here, then like this year, you know, Georgia Southern stopped in and we had never had them visit. And like four kids showed up to talk to Georgia Southern. So, part of it is just, you know, the way of like what students are talking about and their interests.
That's great. And the last comment on the, I will quit here. Because I, I really see these roles as key conduits with these universities, too, to make sure that we know where they're thinking and where they're headed. Because I, I think this is just going to continue to involve, evolve and that LNSK is going to continue to get more and more challenging. So, I mean, I'm just really grateful for everything you guys do and, you know, it's great to have you here and to learn firsthand more about it, so.
Just one quick comment. So, fresh out of this, two girls through, as you know, in the last two years. If you can get Sean through it.
I would say the best one last.
Listen, I...
It was Sean.
It was Sean. But, listen, I've seen what you guys do, I have great admiration and respect for what you do. You know, you got the support of the board and of the administration, just keep doing it. And if you need something you don't have, let us know because what you do is outstanding. Thank you.
I feel very supported.
So, I do have a question, actually. So, I am... Could be. So, I am cursed enough to be chairman of the Illinois Student Assistance Commission. So, obviously, the outmigrations bother some to us as well as Springfield. What, you showed us numbers, I think you were 51% in-state, I think you were 51, 49. You were like 20. Yeah, it was, it was bad.
Right.
I assume those trends are actually going the wrong way?
Well, so, what we're seeing now is it's spinning back. So, when, you know, the recession hit and there was a lot of bad media press about, you know, Illinois schools and the cost and just a lot of stuff.
It was budget concerns.
It was budget, you know, parents were saying...
The question is, will Illinois, will Eastern Illinois University be in existence in two years?
Exactly. And parents were saying...
They've been in Charleston forever. I mean, that question's been asked on...
Right, yeah, no, for sure. They, parents were actually saying to me in my office, I'm worried about sending my kid to an Illinois school because we don't know what's going to happen. And it's hard to say, oh, it's going to be okay, because we were all worried, right? And, and it was a natural, there's some cachet for a student to be able to say, well, I went to school out of state. And all of our out-of-state, especially our contiguous states, they got very savvy at offering scholarships or reductions in price to rival Illinois in-state prices. So, there were a lot of competing factors in there. But what we're seeing now, you know, for example, U of I has instituted the Illinois Promise to help under-resourced students find it more affordable, right? And even though we may not have a huge number of kids who qualify, we do have kids who qualify. And that's going to make a huge difference in their world. Because I don't know if you're all familiar, but there, I'm not going to remember every single criteria. But if the family has high financial need, good grades, is admitted essentially, shows as zero EFC on financial aid, so that's, that's Pell eligible, they can qualify for full tuition at U of I. And other in-state colleges are offering similar programs to also...
I had a student come to me, UIC has, they, is it the Aim High or is it?
Aim High.
Yeah, Aim High is the initiative in Illinois to try and recruit some of our excellent in-state students to stay in-state. And UIC decided to handle their money as like a way to recruit the best of the best and offer like a smaller number of students full tuition. And I talked with one of our seniors who was just offered that, you know, and so, she's feeling pretty good where she sits right now, that like, yeah.
Right, yeah.
That's huge.
Yeah.
It is.
So, I think that, you know, the pride of earning like a scholarship, whether it was from out-of-state or in-state, like, that sways students. But a lot of these out-of-state schools were making the cost similar with price reductions. But I do see, like, you know, last year, we had a ton of kids, like, our top three schools at Vernon Hills, I believe, were, well, it was CLC, U of I, ISU, and University of Illinois in Chicago. So, that was like pretty noticeable. And I do agree with Amy that that's like kind of where it's trending for itself.
That's what, thank you.
Yeah, everyone's super excited about like, you know, hearing this money and like automatically qualifying for this Illinois one, for example.
Yeah, thanks for the Aim High, because we just actually put that one in place. I mean, it's taking 25 million, this college has to match it and things of like, you know, that nature. So, I'm glad that's actually having a little bit of...
For sure.
In fact, can I assume a lot of our kids really are in the MAP area? You really don't do a lot with MAP?
Uh, no, they, we, absolutely. We have kids who qualify, yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Great, okay, so, we're trying to be going there as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
To all of us.
Yeah.
So, we have a lot of families that we offer a financial aid completion workshop to families so that, you know, if families are halfway through and stumble upon a question, the ISAC reps come in and will be available one night to help answer those questions on an individual basis. And we stress like to get their financial aid done because the MAP grant can run out. And so, I have a lot of parents that like think sometimes even like, do I need to do it on October 1st? Like, how urgent is it? And because there is, there are a lot of students who are qualifying for that grant.
So, you're giving what you do from ISAC, yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Kevin and I have talked about this before, the stability in the state financially will help greatly because we will not have numbers about Eastern and Western and Southern and consolidating all the colleges into just a couple. ISU, same thing. So, that, I think, will help greatly and that the message coming out of Springfield will be a better message. You'll have, Kevin, you guys should have consistent funding for what you do, et cetera, and for the grants and the MAP grants and all of that. So, that should help and that's all good news. I just want to say really to our community at home that these two women and their roles in the district are one, are two of the true value adds of District 128, okay? You may not know, but most school districts do not have full-time Amys and Beckys, okay? This district was, has been on the cutting edge for a number of years with this, before I ever walked in the door in the district. And Amy and Becky just keep that tradition not only alive but growing. And for our parents, when they start offering sophomore parents the opportunity to come in and start learning about college, those evenings are amazing. And they are so helpful having sat through them as parents. And then your junior year, and then you're, you know, kind of right at the beginning of the senior year. All those evenings and the programs they present are very helpful. And then all the daily work they do with kids. I'm sure Scott, your two kids, John's got two that are in college now, you know, went through Vernon Hills. But I can tell you that Amy was instrumental with both of my girls. My older daughter, smaller daughter's college, okay? And very specific areas. And my younger daughter wanted kind of a medium-sized state university. And their ability to help them refine a list of five or six working schools was invaluable in their college search. And I know that they do that for virtually every parent they talk to. And when parents show up and they have a list, their kids have a list of 31 schools they want to go visit and go to, Amy will tell the whole audience, you need to narrow that list. That's very helpful for parents to hear that. So, you are truly value-add for this district, you do incredible work. We're happy to support you. The board has just told you, which they don't even tell us, by the way, if you need anything, just ask.
Yeah, I'm standing here, go ahead.
Yeah, you better, you know, put your list together because they mean that now. But we so appreciate all the work that you do and it's just a great resource for our kids and parents in the district. So, thank you for everything you do.
Lots of students today talking about wanting to go to like Arizona State or anything.
Aim High.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there, because we have no student school board grants, there's really nothing on the president's report, so we'll break the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, given the really inclement weather outside this evening, we are going to, and there's no student board reports tonight. We're also going to skip the good news report and we will double up and pick that up next month so we can continue to move along this evening and finish at a reasonable time. As the board is aware, if you guys can pull the community connection slide up for us. As the board is aware, as part of our overall communication in the district, we sent postcards out to roughly 25,000 Mary or-ish tax-paying addresses in, in the school district for two reasons, you know, before the winter holiday, late November, early December. One, to communicate upcoming programs and opportunities to engage with the district and the board on our new capital projects. But also to give our public some additional knowledge and opportunities to connect with the district. So, we, Mary's been tracking numbers and, and we've actually had maybe 40-ish folks sign up to get additional information from us, just down if you taxpayer with no kids in school. And so, they will now get all the information that you did as parents, e-Paw prints, the e-board briefs, all of that. But the other thing, in the Paw prints that come out Friday before our school board meetings or our committee meetings, there's a notice at the top of the Paw prints that says, you know, we're going to have a board meeting on Tuesday, January 29th. Here is how you connect to the documents. You click on and you can go right to the documents. So, they will get everything that the board will get in their package moving forward. So, it's just an additional way. And we think what we'll do is probably at the beginning of next year, we'll do that again just as an opportunity for more community people, of course, with our parents in the district. We offer that as part of the registration process and they're kind of inundated with that. But for the community at large, and they will have an opportunity to stay kind of current, connected. And then they will get all the other additional news about the district and the board briefs following the board meetings. So, we think that's a good thing, but we just wanted to highlight that for the community tonight, they may not know that. And they still have the opportunity to connect with us. And if they've lost their card or whatever, they can just give us a call and we can connect up. So, any questions or comments, Kevin?
All right, so again, we sent out 25,000, we have about 40, give or take, 40, 50. A small number, right? Very small number.
I think it's a little bigger now, especially every time it snows, we get more people interested every year. I have 70 new friends on Twitter for the district, but, yes, a small...
It's a small, it's a small number, but how many people actually get e-Paw? I mean, this, not good, because all the parents get it.
There's over 5,000.
5,000.
We're pushing about 5,500.
So, 5,500 people, give or take, get our board meeting materials, get notice of our board meetings with everything that could possibly be discussed if they have any interest. So, I think that's actually, yeah, that's, again, the 50 or 100 out of 25,000 seems small, but let's be clear, five, over 5,000 people have the opportunity to weigh in at board meetings if they so choose. I think that's just always important, something important to remember when we hear that, oh, we don't know. So, thank you, by the way, for pointing that, that out. I think that's, that's a great, great thing you do right there in terms of giving them...
Good, thank you, Kevin. And credit to Mary for her work on, you know, communication behind the scenes. And also know that, of course, we've got, you know, a large Facebook contingent, we have a large Twitter contingent as we push information out. So, you know, we work across all those platforms and really Mary coordinates all of that for us and plans that. So, we appreciate the work, obviously, and I know the board does it, Mary does on, on all our behalfs. Pat, you were going to say something, I think?
No, I'm good, that's good.
Okay.
Good job, yeah.
All right, okay, thank you. Next up on the superintendent's report is LHS and VHS major capital projects. And before we do anything with the projects that haven't moved forward yet, I want Mark, I'm going to ask Mark if there's any update on the swimming pool. Hard to think about that right now. The temperature is dropping outside like a rock, but I'm sure there is some update on the swimming pool. Mark?
Okay, I'll make it brief. The Facebook installation on the north wall of the pool has been completed. And we've moved to the east side, which is the last side. The equipment's been brought in, the large equipment, so now we've started the masonry work on the east side of the building, which is the last section I'm going to do to complete the exterior section. They've also moved inside and are doing interior masonry work on the colder days. So, we're working outside and inside. We completed overhead ductwork over the mezzanine area down to where the elevator will be at the west end of the building so we can transition into the wall and around that elevator shaft. They're working on insulating, finishing the insulation around that ductwork. They've completed all the raceway installation for the electric up in the ceiling areas. And we actually, they completed pouring the north side pool deck and a portion of the east side. And next week, they're working to pour more deck around on the south side of the pool.
Good. Any questions? And then our goal would be, of course, as long as weather cooperates, would be at our February committee meeting to put on our hats and take a walk in and let's take a look around at the pool. Not ready to jump into yet, Scott and Kevin, but, you know, that's coming in the spring.
We'll put our eyes to it, Tom.
Yeah, it's coming in the spring.
So, you can't just go all the way.
Yes, exactly, thank you. Okay, next up in the agenda, in a few minutes, we are going to recommend to the board that we, you authorize us to go out to bid on our capital projects. But I want to do a couple of things again tonight, really, for maybe our community since our board meeting is taped. Going back to before the holiday, we planned two standalone meetings for the community to come in and hear the plan, interact with us and ask questions. The first one was held on Tuesday, December 11th at 7:00 PM at the VHS Studio Theater. The second one was held on Tuesday, December 11th at 7:00 PM at the LHS Studio Theater. We had two boards, board members as primary kind of spokespeople with us. Several other board members attended as community members on those forums. In January, we had our board committee meetings and on Monday, January 14th. Tonight, we're having a board meeting with this on the topic. And then before the board actually votes to authorize a wording of the bids, which would really obligate us to then move forward, we have two more meetings in February. On Monday, February 11th at 5:30, our, our committee meetings. And then on Monday, February 25th at 7:00 PM, we have our regular board meeting, which may, depending on how the bidding goes and the bids get out, may be the night that we actually ask you, recommend you to accept the bids and begin to move that process forward. But as we discuss the committee, it, just for timing sake, it may be early the next week at a special board meeting. So, once again, we sent 25,000 postcards out with those dates on them in both communities. And I would say between the two, we probably had 50 people-ish show up from the community. We were asked some good questions, we had some good comments, we had some good follow-up with folks, you know, emailing and talking to people after the scenes. But those meetings, I think, were very worthy and it was a good thing for us to do as a district. So, the other thing I want to cover before we make a recommendation tonight is really our FAQs on capital plans. So, what work is being proposed and why is it being proposed? The District 128 Board and Administration have been assessing and reviewing long-term Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School capital needs for approximately five years. In the past few years, the board has completed assessment, prioritized needs, and reviewed options to meet those needs. All current and/or proposed projects... All current and/or proposed projects will be paid for from existing cash reserves and will require no borrowing on behalf of the board. The highest priority was replacing the current or soon to be old LHS pool and adding more on-campus parking. With significant current cafeteria needs at Vernon Hills High School and continued rising enrollment, expanding the student cafeteria, adding classrooms and a STEM lab and adding a second gym became our highest priorities there. Based on current rising enrollment and future enrollment projections at Vernon Hills, the board is considering a conservative approach to the addition of classrooms with future options to add more classrooms if and as needed. At LHS, the planning would complete, would include completion of the new swimming pool, which had been previously approved and, as we just discussed, is under construction. The work is expected to be completed on the LHS swimming pool sometime in the spring of 2019. The parking lot addition, again, already approved and already under construction and will be completed when the weather breaks. An additional 68 parking spots on the west side of the property were approved by the board and the Village of Libertyville. These additional spots are much needed for the LHS campus. And finally, at LHS, repurpose the current soon to be old pool, which is under consideration tonight. Will provide a multi-purpose physical education and extracurricular facility. This building and space at LHS is important for both curricular and extracurricular needs. At Vernon Hills High School, expand the cafeteria, again, under consideration. The existing cafeteria is at least half of the size it should be for a high school the size of Vernon Hills High School. As a result, the cafeteria space must be expanded into the front lobby and the lunch periods are scaled back to only 22 minutes in length currently. The expanded cafeteria remodelled serveri area will be able to better accommodate the current and expected increase in students. Next at Vernon Hills, eight classrooms and a STEM lab. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering and mathematics. That is also under consideration. Analysis of classroom usage at Vernon Hills was completed to determine the current and future needs for classroom space. The proposed new STEM lab and classrooms will be able to accommodate both changing curriculum needs and increasing enrollment. And finally, at Vernon Hills, a second gymnasium, combination dance studio. Currently, Vernon Hills High School has the same curricular and extracurricular programs as Libertyville High School. And as such, it has the same space needs. Second gymnasium and dance studio will be able to accommodate all of these needs and provide for increasing enrollment. So what are the costs for each campus and the cost overall? At LHS, already approved by the board and under construction, the new LHS swimming pool and the LHS parking lot addition, the total for both of those projects is 22.5 million. Under consideration is repurposing the current or old LHS swimming pool at a total estimated cost of $5 million. Total estimated cost for all projects at Libertyville, $27.5 million. At Vernon Hills High School, under consideration, expansion of the cafeteria, addition of eight classrooms and a STEM lab, and addition of a second gym. Total estimated cost for all projects at Vernon Hills, $26.6 million. When will the work start and when would it be completed? If approved by the board, projects were, would be bid at the end of January, would bid awards at the end of February or early March. To hit applicable construction cycles, project work would begin late spring at both campuses. Tentative project completion dates are projected to be LHS spring 2020 and Vernon Hills in fall of 2020. How will the projects be funded? They will be funded from 100% cash reserves. There will be no referendum and no increased taxes to fund these projects. In addition, since we are not borrowing money to fund the projects, there will be no bond interest payments. What is the impact on our current cash reserves? Our current cash reserves are roughly $80 million. The total of both of the projects at, all of the projects at both of the schools is $54.1 million, which leaves $25.9 million in cash reserves. That's 30% of fund balance as a percentage of operating expenses. The state of Illinois recommends a minimum of 20% cash reserves.
25.
25, I'm sorry. Yes, we corrected that, didn't we? It's 25% cash reserves. So that would just put us just over the level that the state actually recommends. Does the board plan to build the cash reserves up again? Or in other words, are we gonna start planning now to have $80 million back in reserves at some point? The board is committed to leveling the cash reserves around the 30% level. Or in other words, maintaining the reserves around that level. There is still a great deal of uncertainty in Illinois around school funding and funding, including the percentage of state funding going to public education, potential pension cost via from the state to local districts and the possibility of a property tax freeze. After years of discussion by several iterations of the school board, the board has consensus around the 30% cash reserve level. Finally, the past few and current boards have committed to not use cash reserves to pay for regular operating expenses. And if you follow our board meetings over the course of the year, you will hear that restated on a number of occasions. So finally, what's the potential impact to taxpayers of the proposed projects? There is no tax impact. District 128 has no outstanding debt and there is no debt incurred to pay for these projects. Thus, also, there are no interest payments, which can be, as Dan has pointed out a number of times, can be substantial over the long term. So those are really, that's kind of the overview of the FAQ of the highlights that we did in our community presentations. I do want to make one other comment about dance in the district because there were a few, just a few comments made about dance in the district and expanding district dollars. Working with our folks at the building, we captured some numbers at both of the buildings in the dance programs. And remember, dance is a curricular activity under our PE curriculum and it's also a very vibrant co and extracurricular activity at both of the buildings. So in physical education at LHS, there are 233 students in dance. We have five sections of dance and 154 students and three sections of yoga and Pilates at 79 students. In co and extracurricular activities at LHS, approximately 161 students. Cheerleading, 43, pomstein, 35, orchestras, 45, and the fall musical. Total student physical education and co and extracurricular dance related participants at Libertyville, 394. We should note also that LHS is required to cap the number of dance-related sections in its physical education program due to lack of available space and safe space to expand the program. At Vernon Hills in physical education, there are 142 students, five sections of dance, 142 students. In co and extracurricular activities, 152 students, cheerleading, 31, dance team, 36, orchestras, 50, and the fall musical, 35. Total VHS student physical education and co and extracurricular dance related participants, 294 students. VHS is not able to offer yoga, Pilates fitness or total body fitness in its physical education program due to lack of available and safe space. So total District 128 student physical education and co and extracurricular dance related participants equals 688 students or 20.8% of the total District 128 student enrollment. Dance is substantial in District 128. And both at Vernon Hills with repurposing, or Libertyville repurposing the current pool will provide dance facilities. And at Vernon Hills, as part of creation of the second gym, will also create dance facilities. And the last thing we'll mention tonight is something that we talked with, with the board. Before, four years, our dance kids have been nomads in our buildings. They have practiced in areas that are really not suitable for dance, often carpet on concrete or flooring, often in areas that ceiling height is not high enough for them to be able to work on throws and jumps moving forward. And as we've reviewed this plan, we have talked about the fact that, you know, we have an obligation under Title IX, federal Title IX legislation, to make sure that we are providing, you know, safe and comparable facilities for our dance kids in the district and our plans certainly address those issues as well. So with that said, and with the projects that I had mentioned tonight, we are recommending to the board that you authorize us to go out to bid on the projects, the remaining projects as noted tonight at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools.
Okay, so let's start and just ask for a motion to authorize a bid on the major capital projects when the board has listed. Then we'll open it up for further discussion.
I authorize, or I move to vote on and accept the bids on the major capital projects.
To authorize.
To authorize, to authorize the bids on the major capital projects as described by Dr. Lee.
Hi, second.
Go ahead. Now, any further discussion? Anybody?
I'm really excited about the plans and give you a lot of credit as well as your entire staff. There has been countless hours on behalf of several committees, teams, employees to really get this off on the right foot and do it right from the very beginning. So I'm very excited to see the bids come in and very excited to potentially get started on this.
And I hope that the people watching this, if they're watching the video at home, don't get the impression that, you know, that we're somehow not interested in this. We spent a number, a lot of hours.
Years.
Numbers of meetings, yeah, literally years of discussion on, on these topics and some quite in-depth conversations. I too am excited about getting these projects rolling.
Yeah, thank you, Lee, and thank you, Jim. Again, great teamwork as we always do in the district, lots of people working on this. And I want to thank the board. This is something that we have been actively talking about for over five years. And, you know, at some point, we pushed that conversation along to get to a point where we could actually do some decision-making on what we were gonna do. And we would be remiss for everyone in not mentioning that along the way, the board abated $18.5 million to taxpayers, meaning they didn't, had not collected $18.5 million of debt under law that district could have collected. And that's all part of this discussion too, as we move forward, that put us in a position to pay off our bonds, you know, pay ourselves the interest, get rid of that bond obligation to be in position, we can look forward, so.
Can I ask a question, Francis, along those lines? I think there have been comments from community members over the years who have said, reduce my taxes or write me a check if there's a surplus. The only way for us as a district to affect that is to abate. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Because there would be no mechanism.
Right, to write a check.
To write a check. And the way that those taxes are abated and spread out is not our choice, that's done by the county. Is that correct?
Well, I think.
How, how is that abatement spread out among the community?
I think I know what you're asking.
So essentially, the abatement, the abatement just negates the levy that was already put in place. So when the, when the referendum was passed and that debt was incurred, that was levied against all of the existing property owners at that time. As an abatement comes in, basically says, you know what, don't, like, even though we did file this and say levy this amount, don't do that, reduce that levy by X amount. So that gets spread, whatever year that happens, equitably amongst all the taxpayers based on their equalized assessed value of that year.
Thank you. So that's how we sort of, because we can't write a check to taxpayers, that's how we affect that.
So again, there, and we had discussions on this, quite extensive discussions, including whether or not there was a vehicle to write a check. And there was not, okay? And so the two things that we had to consider, one was to abate the property, or I'm sorry, the bond and interest levy, okay? Which eventually was gonna go away, all right? It was really chosen that way because we didn't have to worry about continuing to raise revenue for those kinds of expenses, okay? If we did that for our, I'll call it the main part of our levy, all right? So let's say, and I'll just make up a number, if our levy was typically $50 million and we decided we wanted to abate some money there, well, the problem is then our base becomes 45 million and our ability to increase that going forward is capped from 45.
So in subsequent years, we're not able to recapture that if there is.
If you reduce.
That's a simplistic, that's a simplistic sort of picture of what that is, but in essence, that's the problem.
Another way maybe to look at that and correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe this is a simplistic way to look at it as well. The way in which we went about this abatement actually had a greater impact on our reserves, where if we abated the operating fund, it would have an impact on programs. And we wanted to impact the reserves in order to.
Well, it would have an impact on programs in the future.
In the future, right. But it had the most immediate impact because we were then able to pay off, you know, not only abate, but pay off that same bond issue. It seems to me, and maybe I'm oversimplifying, that it had a more direct and more immediate impact on the reserves versus on the operating fund.
So for, I mean, for example, if, if our levy was $50 million a year and we could actually abate $10 million of that and say in any given year, we're gonna only take 40 million and not take 10 million from the taxpayers. If the following year, we could bring it back to 50, well, that might have made that a viable vehicle to do it.
But the state.
With tax caps, we can't figure out a route. So that was really why that wasn't done, okay?
That's helpful, thank you.
I would like to make one comment too, because I know it's been reported in the press about the district and hoarding cash and doing that. Never has there been a discussion on this board in the numerous years I've been here. I won't even make a number because I'll make a wrong one. Where we had any conversation whatsoever talking about hoarding cash or frankly, even building the reserve, okay? I really don't think there's ever been one discussion where we talked about building the reserve, okay? We're very fortunate to have built those reserves, okay? And we're very fortunate to be in this position where we can essentially pay cash for these big projects, okay? But I need to make it clear that we have never talked about hoarding cash, we have never talked about building reserves. So I mean, there's never been an idea that we would like build it back up because we never really had strategy to build it in the first place, okay? I mean, some of these are the unanticipated events that, that come with, you know, revenue a little higher than anticipated, spending a little bit favorable than anticipated, and over the years, we've been narrowing that gap, I think. But it just never was part of the strategy.
So when there was a surplus, the board simply chose not to spend it?
And we absolutely chose not to spend it. To what Dr. Lee said earlier, it's been a bedrock principle that we would not spend reserves, at least on a continuing basis, to fund any operating expenses. Because once you do that, once we find ourselves in a deficit position from an operating standpoint, you can't recover because you're already maximizing your levy by inflation, okay? And so you assume, I mean, with that levy capped that way, it's very difficult for us to control our expenses such that they wouldn't go up, let's say, at the rate of inflation without cutting programs or doing some of those things, okay? And so our ability to make up, let's say, if we were running a $5 million deficit, our ability to go from a $5 million deficit to a breakeven is really not feasible without cutting programs, all right? And once you start using reserves to do that, you're on that track, all right? And that's why we've always said and we've always had conversations, when we did our budget reviews, we said, nope, we gotta go find a way to cut some spending pretty much as we go, okay? And so we've done that over the years. That's why we cut the administrative headcount, right, by about 20%.
Yeah, $530,000 a year.
And this is something that the board has been talking about since I've been on the board in May and before that.
Pretty much since I've been.
It's really important to reiterate as we are now on the precipice of moving forward with this project. Thank you for clarifying.
I think it's important to realize in all these capital projects, I mean, I think there was a tipping point here, okay? And it was really the Hawthorne experience, okay? Because we had done demographic surveys for a number of years and I think for a while, there was little evidence really that the population growth demographics were such that we were gonna need to add space in Vernon Hills and Libertyville. And that's why, I don't know, now it's probably five years ago that you guys first asked for a gym and we said, I just don't see it, okay? But I think what's happened over the last two years in particular, I mean, I know when I get challenged on this in the community, it's real easy for me to say, well, there's one thing we know for sure, the kids are in the school at Hawthorne and they're coming our way, okay? This isn't some model, this isn't some projection, they're in seats, okay? In fact, they're in trailers. So, you know, I think that was really what sort of lit the fire under this. We kind of said, hey, if we don't move, we're gonna go to the village board and we're gonna say, we need to put some double wides in the parking lot. You know, these kids are gonna have to run inside to go to the restroom when it's 20 degrees below zero. None of these would be good things, okay?
And there's, and we talked about, in the presentations that we did, we talked about the cost of waiting. Because if you take, you know, $54 million of projects and you say, we're gonna delay that a year at 6% construction inflation, which seems to. to run about like college tuition inflation, you know, it doesn't run like in line with CPI, and you start doing the math on that, I mean, you're into millions of dollars of additional payments because you waited a year, or two years, or three years, or something that we're going to end up doing. So again, I just want to say on behalf of all of us, we appreciate the board's patience as we've had these conversations, you know, for the folks who've been on the board here in the pad gym for a longer period of time, and certainly for those of you that are newer in more recent times, as we've kind of worked our way through this, and I think we're in a really good place. I know we feel really good about it, I know you feel really good about it. So this will start that process moving, and we can make sure that we hit the construction cycle so we don't have to wait a year, you know, to get rolling at, at both of the campuses. So with that said, Pat, I think.
All right, anybody else have any other questions?
You guys, any comments from the, ready to go? Okay, let me just make one more question, I'm going to make sure I heard it right. So let's assume we go forward on the, on the timeline we're talking about, we authorize going to get the bids, we get the bids next month, and then we rock and roll from there. We're talking about the LHS old pool being renovated by spring 2020, that's a year from now.
Correct.
Just a little more. Okay, and then more.
Just to be clear, spring goes until about June.
Yeah. Spring goes until April.
I got it. So no, I, I get, I get that. But I mean, let, look, by the time we get the bids approved, it's, it's basically March, okay? So we're, we're already running out of spring pretty soon. And then VHS, all of the work we're doing there, fall.
Fall 2020.
Fall 2020. Okay, so it just sounds like it could be a little aggressive, I love it, it'd be great, you guys are still good with that?
Oh, yeah, we're good.
Yes.
For sure. John, John has already been meeting with his team because there's going to be a lot of logistics required, because they're going to have to do some construction in this app, you know, because they've got to have a cafeteria. So they're already working on logistics. These guys are still good, they're solid, every week we meet with them and all they've got to do is get rolling.
Yeah, I guess, I need to remind ourselves, this is the single biggest thing we have endeavored to achieve since we built this.
And we will.
Yeah, I'm confident we will, but it's.
I, I think, I think I put a motion forward quite a while ago.
Yes, okay. What's a motion?
I opened it up for further discussion, I want to make sure all voices are.
Can you get a show over there by the windows?
It's getting cold by the windows. A little chill by the windows.
I'm looking at the rest of it. We're going to rock and roll through this. All right, any other comments or questions? No? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Moose.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
My back's to it, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Is that what?
Yeah, all right, let's go.
So let's go FOIA requests, so we're bidding, let's go, yep.
Okay, FOIA request, we have a series of requests here, and as you know, I'm, I'm actually required to read this into the record now. So forgive me, this is a little bit longer, but I'll try and move through this. On 12, 10-18, we received a request from Amanda Marquez, all emails to and from Nora Castro, Chris Castro, Marquez family and staff from July 10, 2016 to January 1, 2017, asking please to not include any student to teach versus contacts. Response requesting clarification was made on 12/11/18. Deadline was 12/7/18. Clarification received on 12/11/18. Items one and three of request were denied. Item two requested clarification, that, working with council, that response date was 12/17. On 12/17/18 and 12/19/18, Amanda Marquez, Chris Marquez, and Matt Marquez, six requests were submitted on December 17, sent over five separate emails. Number one, all communication to Chris Castro from Nora Castro to include email, phone call transcripts, notes, from 6/6 to 18 to October 16, 2018, 2A. All communication to include email, notes, phone records, transcripts, et cetera, from Nora Castro to Susan Lamperman Associates, P.S. Patel, Pascola, from June 5, 2018 to December 14, 2018, and any emails that use the name Marquez during that time. Two B, all legal action taken against E128 during that same time period, please react any student names. Three, all communication from Nora Castro to include email, phone, call, transcripts, notes, et cetera, from 6/6, 2018 to September 6, 2018. Not to include any student-to-teacher communications. Four, all emails, phone records, or any communication to and from Nora Castro from June 10, 2016 to July 10, 2016. Five, all communication of any kind from Nora Castro from September 14 to November 30, 2018, is amended on December 19. You can exclude student-to-teacher communication, notification of staff needs, or employee benefit communications. Two new separate emails were submitted on December 19. All communications from Nora Castro between June 10, 2016 to July 10, 2016 do not include duplicate emails or emails to students, you may send them electronically to this email. I am sure, my sister told you, we would all be requesting items weekly, one month cannot be unduly burdensome. All communication to include phone conversations or transcripts, emails, texts, notes, mail, carrier pigeon, if applicable, et cetera, from Nora Castro between May 15, 2018 and June 15, 2018. Do not include student records, do not include emails that are the same, like, duplicate sent to multiple people unless there is a response. With all that said, the response was a voluminous request, an invitation to amend this request was done on 12/21/18. The deadlines were 12/24/18 and 12/27/18. We received no response, final response was denied and unduly burdensome. That was sent on, working with our council, 1/14/19. Total time spent on all Marquez requests, 20 hours. On 12/13/18, Bethany Simpson from Smart-Pooh Care, electronic record of purchase orders dated 9/13/18 to current, 1/15/19, including purchase order number, purchase date, line item details, line item quantity, line item price, vendor ID, name and address. Response date was 1/15/19, commercial response date, deadline was 1/15/19. Time spent on this one was one hour. That was Rose DeSeco that handled that request for us. 1/15/19, Nathan Mahalik from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association requested names and email addresses of all teachers or administrators who are retiring in 2019. Brian handled that response, response date was 1/18/19. Our deadline is 1/23/19, and time spent on that request was like half an hour. And Pat, that concludes the FOIA request. Okay, next on the superintendent's report, we have done an extensive review of, in our semi-end or review of closed session minutes, we are recommending that board that we release no, none, no, or none of the closed session minutes this time. And so if the board so agrees to that, Pat, then we do not need to go into closed session to, unless you all want to discuss when I'm on the call.
Just a quick question for clarification, our attorney continues to recommend these remain closed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can, we can do that vote here then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to keep the closed session minutes confidential?
I have a motion to keep the closed session minutes confidential.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Moose.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Motion chairs.
All right, City of Finance Committee, Chairperson Moose.
We have summer school transportation fee.
Yeah, just as we was discussing committee, looking at our, our fee, our cost per our, we did our transportation last year, that cost went up 25%, and which would include our summer school transportation, so therefore, looking at our fee to see if there's a corresponding increase, currently, the current fee is $45, it's been there for several years. Just looking at it, I don't, I personally didn't feel that a 25% increase in that fee was, would be something I would recommend at this time. However, I do think going from the 45 to 50, I think is, is a good balance. This doesn't come really close to paying for it, it's, it's honestly more of just a, just to help offset the cost of summer school transportation.
So we're looking for a motion to move the fee from $45 to $50.
I move to increase the summer school transportation fee from $45 to $50.
Second.
Any discussion?
Huber.
Aye.
Moose.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, motion chairs.
And another, under other.
We are good.
All right, program and personnel, chairperson.
Okay, we have a couple items here, we have board policies for a second reading and adoption. I don't think we need to go through these in any detail, they've been reviewed both for first reading at the last board meeting and during committee meetings, so, and there hasn't been any, Brian, there's.
There's not been any changes.
No adjustments or anything, so I think we just look for a motion to approve these.
I move to approve the listed board policies after second reading and adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Moose.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Okay, we have a couple employment of employees as listed.
Looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the employees as listed.
Second.
Any question, comments for the discussion? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
And one final item, an additional educational tool request that came in after the consent